Call to order, the planning commission meeting for Thursday, September 20th, 2018. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner, or Chair Schwartz.
Here.
And Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Stevens.
Do we need to draw your draft?
Nope, nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda's been adopted. Next, we have approval of our minutes for our, from our August 16th meeting from last month.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I propose that we approve minutes from the August 16th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Our first order of new business is planning case 18-13, a PUD amendment and final PUD site plan for self-storage facility E&amp;R investment, 101st Avenue and Foley Boulevard. This case will be continued to, until next month's meeting, October 18th. They had some more work that they needed to do on their case. However, because it was published, we will open a public hearing and then leave the public hearing open this evening, in case anyone here wishes to speak to it. So at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 18-13, a PUD amendment and final PUD site plan for a self-storage facility at 101st Avenue and Foley Boulevard. Anyone present wish to speak public hearing? Seeing none, we will continue the public hearing until next month's meeting, which will be October 18th. In commission, we need a motion to continue this case to October 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Heikala. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our second order of new business, planning case 18-14, a home occupation permit for personal training business at 11617 Evergreen Street, Rachel and Jamie Humnick. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Excuse me, this item is a, like I said, was a home occupation permit for a fitness facility as a home occupation. The project is highlighted here, just north of 116th on Evergreen. Surrounding land uses are all single-family residential. What they're proposing is a, operate a personal training business as a home occupation. The applicants indicated that most of their clients are serviced via the computer and virtually. However, they do do some in-home training. They provide exercise training, nutrition, and general fitness advice. They do have clients come to their home periodically, and that's what's triggering the need for the home occupation permit. The hours of clients who will visit the house are 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and there'll be no more than three to five clients per week. Staff compared their proposal to the standards for the home occupation permit and found that they do comply with the, with those standards. Training will occur in the basement, and the area that they're going to designate for their training area is less than 400 square feet. Staff is recommending the planning commission approve the home occupation permit with the following conditions. Hours of client training are limited to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That is what the code requires. They're proposing 9:00 to 7:00. Maximum time the clients can be at the premises is 30 hours per week. The businesses can occupy no more than 400 square feet. All vehicles associated with a home occupation are parked in the driveway, including employees and clients, and compliance with Title 11 of the city code. If that'll answer any questions, and the applicants or in the audience also, if you have any questions of them.
Thank you. Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Chair Schwartz, I have a question for Mr. Harlecker.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have one minor question. Is there a outlook as to the maximum? I, I understand it said three to five clients per week. If, in case the situation were to be, what would be the, because it's a residential area, the maximum that they'd be able to accommodate at one time? Or what would be the maximum?
They have indicated that it'd be one at a time. We could include that as a condition. The maximum per week that a client could be there will be 30 hours per week.
Okay. The follow-up question is, if all, anyone who's attending, is it, I got the understanding is that all the parking would take place on private, on the driveway? Okay, then that would, that would be the finer to it. Okay.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Stevens.
I would kind of hesitate to just do one client per week, because what if a husband and wife want to come in and do nutrition, or stretchy, or, or something to help each other, you know, so, I don't know, or a mother and daughter, or something like that, that maybe, you know, I don't know the situation, but, you know, that might be something too, if you just say one client, and they have availability of having, you know, relatives come together, you know, that might be another situation too, so.
Right. Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, the way it's, it's structured at this point, the limiting factors are the amount of square footage that's allowed for the business to, to occupy the training area, as well as parking on site. Those two things will tend to limit the, the number of people that can't actually be there at one time.
Right.
Certainly, if there's more than one person per car.
Right.
There's an opportunity for more people.
Right.
But then you've got the space limitations.
Okay. So if there's two people, is 400 square feet enough? That's, you know...
Is more than what enough?
Is, is, if they have two people, like a husband and wife come together, is 400 square feet enough for two people? That's...
Uh, maybe they could answer that question.
Okay, all right. Perfect.
Any other questions from the commission at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikala.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, it sounds like the business is currently operating, is that correct?
Um, I, not sure. They could, they'd have to answer that. This is, they came to City Hall and asked for the application. They might have been just doing stuff, getting the business started, and not having clients come to the house yet. If they're just doing stuff via the internet, they do not require a home occupation permit. So they could have been doing that for a while legally.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
One minor final statement for me. I propose or recommend for consideration to the commission if, if we would add a condition, because the business, and I'm being optimistic, and I know it will, that it will grow and develop at one point, what is the cutoff? So what should be, if there is a group training event or such, what would be, I recommend that we put a, a maximum at one time, be it five or four clients. Then that would take care of impact to the residential and parking, and that should be accommodated by the driveway and the area. That's my, that's my proposal for consideration, to add four or five at, at one time.
Maybe we should hear from them.
Maybe we should hear from the petitioners before we make any additional... Petitioners, anything you'd like to add? Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please. And perhaps you could answer some of the questions that have been brought up to this point as well.
Hello, I'm Rachel Humnick. The address is 11617 Evergreen Street Northwest. So your questions, most of the business, yes, it is in progress right now, but purely virtually, so no in-person training yet. The business was started and intended to be almost entirely as a virtual business. However, from previous jobs, I've been getting requests for people to work with us in person, but just a few people, and that's not really a area that we plan on pursuing growth in So most of the business will be handled virtually. And then, just based on the square footage, it's really tight in there for more than two people, so I probably wouldn't even ever request to train more than two at a time. But as Julia mentioned, like a husband and wife, that is a, a real scenario, so it would be, if that was approved, I would want to have that ability.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can't remember if I missed some of your other questions.
Commissioner Casey.
I think your narrative stated that you don't do group training, you won't do group training.
No, the, the maximum would be two at a time, so, but mostly, 90% of the time, I would say it's just one person.
And then, then is there anything else you would like to add, other than answering the questions?
Um, no, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that I'm compliant with all the city codes, and that I'm not overstepping any boundaries, so just want to make sure that, with the, with it being a residential area, that if I did bring people into my home for business reasons, that we're complying, and so, that's really all that brought us here, and, yeah, I don't know, I'm excited, so, this is my first business.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 18-14, a home occupation permit for personal training business at 11617 Evergreen Street. Anyone present wishing to speak, public hearing? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commission.
Well, I would recommend in planning case 18-14, that we move to approve the home occupation permit with the five stated conditions.
Nice second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission, and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days. Congratulations and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, our next case, planning case 18-15, a site plan approval for design flexibility for exterior building materials at 2163 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Hickman. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting design flexibility to allow vinyl siding as an exterior building material for the furniture and things building, located at 2163 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Property is located here with 107th on the north, Coon Rapids Boulevard along the south, and Quinn, running between 107th and the Boulevard. This is the site here. Surrounding land uses are primarily residential, across Boulevard are residential. There's a, a commercial facility on the corner here, but otherwise, it's residential uses around it. Here's the site plan. This is the existing facility. The strip is on here, were additions that were approved back in the early 90s. You've got the access here and here, frontage along Coon Rapids Boulevard, you got a fairly visible wall here, and then the internal frontage, yeah, wall frontage in the, in the parking lot. The applicant is requesting changes to the exterior material because of hail damage and age. It needs to be replaced. Right now, it's a wood exterior, and the wood is actually structurally part of the building, so it's, the building is, is supported by the existing walls. Final siding is not an allowed exterior building material, therefore, the request for design flexibility. The property is in the River Rapids Overly District. A little background, the site was converted to its current use in 1988. In 1994, the building was expanded for a second time, and that's when it reached its current configuration. When they did the addition, the exterior material at that time was matched the old wood siding, that's why the, the structure looks like it does today. 28,700 square feet, and there's 265 linear feet of building frontage, approximately, along Coon Rapids Boulevard. As you can tell, the building is angled along the street, which each section, as you go to the west, stepped back a little bit farther, so it provides kind of a, a break in the exterior. The proposed vinyl siding is a mix of tan dark brown with metal flangeing. This is what the, the material will look like, the colors, kind of a lighter brown, then this will be a darker brown. Couldn't get an exact match, so these colors are approximate. This area down here is, is for comparison, that shows what the existing building looks like. This is the frontage along Coon Rapids Boulevard. This here is the, the frontage along Quinn Street, with Coon Rapids Boulevard here, 107th off the screen here. So this is what it would look like from Quinn, and this is looking into the building. Again, kind of imposing the, the new siding alongside the existing wood exterior, to give the commission kind of a, a view as to what's being proposed versus what is currently on the building. Planning commission may approve design flexibility, provided the applicant demonstrates that such a modification is necessary to respond to site conditions, will result in better integration of uses, be more energy efficient, or provide significant site amenities. To address the, the initial findings that respond to the site conditions, as stated earlier, the existing wood siding was used for several reasons. Cost efficiency, to better integrate with the neighboring residences, as well as structurally to be part of the, the building. The proposed vinyl siding will continue that residential feel to the building, more than your typical block building materials, therefore making the building more compatible and integrated with the adjacent residential properties. And, secondly, the existing wood siding is structurally part of the building, as indicated earlier. The new exterior material have to be attached directly to the wood siding, and this limits the type of materials that can go on to that wood siding. With that, staff is recommending the planning commission approve the design flexibility and allow the vinyl siding, based on the following findings, and with two conditions. The findings are, given the way the building was constructed, the proposed modification is necessary to respond to site conditions, and, secondly, the proposed modification will result in better integration of uses. The proposed vinyl siding would provide a more residential feel to the building, rather than the typical commercial building materials, making the building more compatible and integrated with residential properties. And with the two conditions, landscaping be installed per the approved plan, landscape plan, as part of that 1994 approval, and, second, the vinyl siding, after speaking with the contractor, I recommend changing the thickness to 0.46?
0.44.
0.44 thickness, greater, better. That's still a commercial quality material. And with that, I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience.
Mr. Harlecker, if the commission was not to approve the design flexibility to allow the vinyl siding, what would the options be for re-siding of, of the building?
Leave it as is, or put siding on that is, meets the material standards of the River Rapids Overly District.
And, okay, and is there a reason that steel or aluminum siding could not be used?
Have to speak to the, the applicant at that, that's what they, that's what they requested.
Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, so this restriction within the River Rapids Overly District, that's, is that just for commercial properties? Because a number of residences right along there, they have vinyl siding on their homes.
They have vinyl siding. I would have to look more in depth at the code. We've typically applied it for just commercial buildings.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
The question is, the landscaping to be installed per the approved plan dated March 17th, 94. Could I have some background, Mr. Harlecker, on, it looks landscaped, is there a modification, or is it incomplete, the landscaping plan?
Well, over the last 20-plus years, landscaping has died off, hasn't been replaced. This is actually the approved landscape plan, that's up before you now.
Okay.
So you can see, they've got some additional trees along here, and then shrubs that'll go along the foundation of the building, and I believe there's also some shrubs that need to be replaced along this fence here. I think the trees are still there, and I believe the hedge is still in place along here, too. But we would look and compare what's out there with this, and then make adjustments accordingly.
Okay. My only proposal to the commission is, is that the landscaping plan be one of the requirements for the approval of...
But it is.
It is. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's condition.
Condition one.
It is condition one. All right. Mr. Schwartz.
Commissioner Heikala.
Is the landscaping plan dated March 17th, 1994? Has that not been modified since 1994? Is there not a more current?
There are more current standards, yes. We recommended that it be compliance with what was approved when they put the, put the building in.
Is there a reason why it wouldn't be?
There are quite a few trees along the Boulevard, and they're more mature now, so adding, they might be able to get a couple additional trees, but because of the, the size, it would be difficult to get, you know, more trees along the Boulevard. Foundation plantings are a requirement for both the current code, as well as what was approved back in 1994.
All right, petitioners wish to add anything?
Would I?
Yes.
Yeah.
Please come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
My name's Laurie Hickman. I live in 1812 Landers Drive, northwest Elk River, Minnesota, and I own furniture and things, and plants and things in Adoka. And we've, we've taken care of Coon Rapids very, very well. We've had a storm that kind of upset us a little bit, put us backwards, and we did the roof, it cost us about $80, $90,000 to do the roof, and we did that just about, maybe six, eight months ago. And looking to paint the whole store, the insurance company came along and said, hey, look, we'll give you $26,000, you paint the store, and I looked at it with the boards and everything else, with the pecker, woodpecker holes in it, deteriorating to T111, it just wouldn't be a good fit for Coon Rapids Boulevard right now. I think we have to update it a little bit, so I want to add $80,000, $85,000 in materials to the Boulevard, and it would really give us a good look to the store. I think the landscaping, we, we, we spend a lot of time on landscaping. We, we cut our grass, we do our bushes, and make it look pretty nice on Coon Rapids Boulevard. But sometimes bushes will die off, and sometimes you, a year later, you catch it, or you don't catch it. Sometimes, uh, but I think we need to update, and I'm willing to update the landscaping, because I, I think the outside, if it looks good, it'll bring people into the inside, so I need to do a little bit more to the landscaping. But in total, I think the siding will give us a real good new look, and it won't overpower the neighborhood, it'll, it'll settle right in with the neighborhood. Years ago, when I put the store up, it was an old XR Benz, and it was spelled backwards, Nebraska Flower Shop. I didn't have more than $1,000 in my pocket, and we built the store to 27,000 square feet, and we built our company to 90 employees today. So, and I have 35 of those employees that have been with me for 30 years, 20 to 30 years. So I need, I still need Coon Rapids, but I've got two other powerful stores, but I'll tell you, there's a different type of customer that comes to our Coon Rapids store than does on Main Street, or in our big store in Elk River. So we, we have a real good clientele in Coon, Coon Rapids, and I tend to have my kids keep that store there for years and years, and I'm still running the business, but the kids will take it over. Anything else you want to ask me? I'd certainly like to answer it.
A question I have, which I originally asked Mr. Harlecker, if we were not to approve the vinyl siding, what other kind of materials would you be able to use to replace your siding?
There would not be, because affordability right now, to put a quarter of a million to $350,000, I think it would cost me 400, the way we would, you would want it. I would probably just repaint the building and let it, let it go for another five, six years, and maybe, if we can catch it then, we will. But it, 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 it just won't look, it's... But it, it, it just won't look, it's, it's chopped up a little bit, the siding and woodpecker holes in the siding. It's, it's a bad siding that was put on by a contractor that should have used T111 with a duratemp, and it would have been waterproof, it wouldn't have rotted out like it does today, it did years ago, so. There is no second choice for me, so I, that's why I'm in here tonight. I can afford the $100,000 that it's going to cost between the other, the roof and everything else, but to put $100,000 in, it takes a lot of dollars to make $100,000. It would set us back a little bit in Coon Rapids.
How long has that siding been on the building as is?
That siding, probably, probably 94.
Okay.
Persevered 88, persevered 90.
Yeah, so little by little, we built the store up, and I think it'll look nice. We'll put a nice siding, a nice combination on it, and we're going to wrap it, we'll keep all our lights and our five globe lights, and we'll redo that landscaping, obvious, I'm going to look at the parking lot to restructure that a little bit with the tar, and we've got some potholes, and I'd like to freshen it up, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 18-15, site plan approval for design flexibility for exterior building materials at 2163 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak at public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner, any questions, or what are your thoughts?
Mr. Schwartz.
Commissioner Heiklauk.
I would like to compliment the owner, I think it's a positive thing for him to be concerned and to want to, excuse me, enhance Coon Rapids Boulevard, and I hope with the siding, and perhaps some more landscaping in the parking lot, you know, to see you there for as many more years as you care to be in business.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
It is such a viable business, some longstanding business, we've been in it ourselves. I think the new look would enhance the property and make the city look good in the process.
So, in planning case 18-15, I recommend that we approve the design flexibility and allow vinyl siding as an exterior building material based on the following findings, that are, the two that were listed, and then also the two conditions that you update the landscaping as in 94, and the vinyl siding, we change that to be 0.44 thickness or better. Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Stevens, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission, and unless, and it can be appealed to the city council within 10 days, business days. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Harlecker, anything under other business?
Uh, let's see. They're moving dirt over on the lone reg, subdivision process, getting, probably getting at those six lots up and going. Got the Honda dealership and Chrysler dealership are still moving along, one's moving along a little bit faster than the other, but that, that typically happens, especially when you're building on poor soils. And that's really the new stuff that's, that things are going. I know TumbleFresh is looking to open up shortly, so is Raising Cane's. They're in the, both those businesses are getting in the process, or the next few days will have their final approvals through the building department, getting out and checking the landscaping, so they should be opening up shortly. I don't know exactly what the date is, but soon, and that's it.
And, Mr. Harlecker, what's on tap for next month?
We've got a home occupation permit for a barber shop, we've got a revocation of a home occupation permit, the resident no longer lives there, and then we've got the items from tonight, the storage facility, and a zone change to go along with it.
All right. Commission, anyone have anything? entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second that.
Motion by Stevens, second by Knoblock, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Needs adjourn.